Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 12th, 2023 New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. The prayer tonight is going to be coordinated by Alderman Royal.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus, and we thank you for yet another opportunity. We pray your blessings upon the citizens of New Bern and those who are celebrating during this season. We ask for your joy and your peace. I pray tonight that our meeting will be done decent and in order, and that at the end of the day, we will all be blessed. May we continue to trust you, your wisdom, your judgment, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you're able to stand, please do so as we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose spans one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you would please call a roll.
Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Alderman Best?
Present.
Alderman Brinson?
Here.
All right, Board, before we approve the agenda, I know we have a Boy Scout Troop 13 here tonight. Would anyone from the group like to come up and give us an introduction? If you would, just come right here to the center to the microphone, give us your name, and tell us a little bit about your troop.
My name is Tyler Williamson.
Speak, try to speak in, just move that microphone right around because nobody home is going to hear you if you don't.
My name is Tyler Williamson. I'm here with Troop 13. We are here for our community or citizenship and community mayor match.
All right. Glad to have you all. Okay, Boards, everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone item number 16 until our first meeting in January.
That's the discussion of the BP building change?
Correct.
So your motion is to table that and approve the agenda as is with that exception?
That's correct.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is request and petition of citizens. Ms. Clerk. The one and only tonight is Jerry Williams of 1514 Kimberly Road.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Hi, I am Jerry Williams. I've lived in New Bern for seven years now, and I can tell you that I'm not the only person who has difficulty finding parking in downtown New Bern. Parking in downtown New Bern is an issue, and I'm not here to ask for any money. I'm here to ask for a permit so that I can open up a business and provide a service so that I can help for people parking in downtown New Bern. I would like to present to you Bear Town rickshaw. I would like to open this business, but unless I can get the permits from you guys so that I can run it legal, you know, I don't want to do it illegal, then I don't want to do any more investing in the, in, in, I have one rickshaw already. I would like to buy a fleet, but unless I get the permit from you guys, I don't want to do that. Okay? What I'm, what I'm proposing is a reverse rickshaws downtown. As you can see in the picture, the people sit in the front and the driver sits in the back. Okay? It is not moving. Is there a button on here?
Yes, I'll record it.
Okay, thank you. I'm running out of time, so skip to the second or third one. I already own a business called Bear Town Delivery Services. I have a contract with the airport where I deliver luggage. You can see this is a picture of somebody sitting in the front of the rickshaw. The rickshaw sits, it has a canopy that you can see above the cars, so that is a, you go to the next one, please. Stop right there. So it's a safety feature where if I'm driving in downtown New Bern, cars can see me from far away because that canopy sits so high. The rickshaws have all the lights. They have running lights, brake lights, turn signals. They have headlights. It has a horn, it has a, a seatbelt, and it has mirrors also. Okay, next one. Little kids love riding in it already. It'll fit up to two adults, and if people are shopping in downtown New Bern, they can put their bags between their legs. Go ahead, Skip. You can see that the riders sit in front, so tourists come to New Bern, they don't have to look at the backside of my head. They get to see how beautiful New Bern is, and it is a beautiful city. Go ahead. That was me trying to show the, the lights. Go, skip down, go to the next one. This one is even better. I didn't get permission from these fine people to put their pictures up here, so I put smiley faces on their pictures. But you can see this has the turn signal where the turn signal is, is in use. The headlights, and the picture prior, prior to this had the headlight in between the people, so when there's not people sitting there, it has a headlight in the middle also. This was a video, but it didn't come through on here of me driving it, and I'm going to, I'm going to close up by saying, I'm not asking for money. I'm asking for a permit so I can, so I can have a business in downtown New Bern. Every time we have an event, it's difficult for people to park and then go all the way down to Union Point. It's difficult, especially for old people. That's the, the original reason why I bought this is because my dad lives with me, and he's old and he can't walk. I don't want any money, I just want a permit. But I also, before I leave, would like to say, there's firemen, there's policemen, there's Boy Scouts, and last but not least, there's people from the ABC Board here tonight. Give them all the money they want, please. As a citizen, I say thank you. Thank you.
Attorney Davis, if you could just clarify, they're free to operate as long as they're not conducting business, but when it turns into a business, that's where we have an issue, correct?
Right, exactly. Yeah, you can ride a bike on the streets, you just can't operate a business. And we don't have an ordinance that allows for this, but certainly, you know, one can be drafted.
Okay.
This comes up from time to time with the horse carriages, et cetera. So if the Board at some later point in the meeting wants to direct me to look into that, I'm happy to do it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the consent agenda. It's the pleasure of the Board on the consent agenda.
Mayor make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Motion as second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Consent agenda carries. Item number 10 is the presentation of City Employees of the Year by Mr. Hughes.
Mayor Alderman, the Employee of the Year program was reinstated last year, recognizing employees who have demonstrated excellent performance in their job duties over the previous 12-month period. Under this program, one employee in three service categories will be recognized, and they are public service, public safety, and public utilities. Nominees were reviewed by a selection committee and announced at the annual employee Christmas lunch on December 6th. Tonight, we will present the winner with a plaque and a check of $300.
The first employee we're going to recognize is for public service, and I'd like to ask Tanya Harms in finance to please step forward.
Can we come down with you, sir?
You should pay him. Absolutely.
First thing we have for you is Chip. Come right, come right here. That's right. And then we have the flag. Congratulations, Tanya.
The next employee we're going to recognize is for public safety, Joshua Whitford with Fire Rescue. Please come down. And our last employee was not able to be here tonight, and that was Tim Davis with the Electric Utility for Public Utilities. So congratulations to those employees of the year. I think it's very important that we recognize those employees each year. Item number 11 is a presentation by Craven County ABC Board, and I think Chip is going to make this presentation. Come on up, Chip.
Always a pleasure, Mr. Mayor, and Board members, and staff, and citizens, to come here to tell you how we did, like, more like a State of the Union, if you will. Hit the, right there. See, I'm doing good already here. I haven't messed up so far. It's been a great year. Put the bottom line up front for the ABC Board and the County of Prayman and the city of New Bern. We did very well. You know, we continue to go with our mission statement, and everything that we do is arena around this one paragraph. If it falls outside, we just don't do it. So we want to make sure that the stores are friendly, safe, they're modern, and they are efficient. And I'm proud to say that after five years of a modernization program, that every store in Craven County meets that. We have a goal of trying to be within 15 minutes of about 90% of our population. We know that Cove City and Ernold, it's a little tough to meet that. But otherwise, with the opening of the new store in Bridgeton, we're going to meet that standard as well. So we're, we're very proud of the Board that we have here in, in Craven. Nope. Hello. I'm hitting it, I'm hitting it. Let me try.
I think we might need some new batteries in that remote. Oh, okay. Maybe it's not that.
I'm, I'm shooting it at every place here. There we go. Thank you. So the Board consists this year of Commissioner Danny Booker, Mayor Dred Mitchell, our secretary is Kathleen Cook, Kenny, it works, yeah. Secretary is Kathleen Cook, our vice chair this year is Kenny Morse III. We did have a change this year. We, for the last seven years, we've had North Carolina ALE as our law enforcement management and in charge of our security. We decided to go a new way January 1st of last year, and we now have the Craven County Sheriff's Department providing both services of law enforcement and security at our stores. And it's, it's working out quite well. They had many apprehensions at, at, in front of our stores, in our stores. So it's, it's working quite well for us. We have a good reputation in the state of North Carolina that you don't want to mess around any of the stores in Craven County. And, you know, I, I take a personal piece that when my, my wife has to go get some brandy for cookies, she wants to leave at 8:00 at night, I don't worry about her going out to any of our stores in, in Craven County and certainly not in New Bern. So, so this year, we had some objectives. We kind of outlined them a little bit last year to you. This year, we continued to have growth in, in our revenue, and we decided that we would do some other things this year, namely, we, we have a new delivery system. At one time, you wanted, if you were a liquor-by-the-drink customer, club, restaurant, you had to go to a store and, and pick it up. Pick up, you know, and that caused problems, you know, coming to the back door and knocking on the door, and it was, it was just not a good system. Now we have enacted a system of a store dedicated for our liquor-by-the-drink. We're one of the few boards in North Carolina that has kind of gone this way, and we've even enhanced that one more step by delivering liquor to our liquor-by-the-board customers, just like any one of their other vendors. It takes away a lot of the security issues, find, you know, that they don't have to worry about liability. We take care, care of all that, and we do that with our own employees. So we're, we're doing quite well on that. We've also installed, you know, new, new cameras throughout the, the Board, and they are really state-of-the-art, along with a couple of systems that are on our property that take a picture of license plates as they come in. And frankly, we've had a couple of warrants outstanding that were apprehended at stores. So it's just another security method that, that Chip Hughes has helped put in our stores. Next, please. So one of the things that we do here a little bit differently than, than other boards in North Carolina, and particularly in, in New Bern, and I thought it'd be of interest to you, is that we buy a barrel of, but now it's bourbon, but it can be other products as well, a barrel of bourbon, and we have various, there's various things that distributors do to include making them unique for New Bern. So we, we have the, one that I participated with and helped pick out was the barrel, the Barron's Barrel, and the other was the Lard Craven Select. And we're going to have one that's going to be in honor of our new store over in Bridgeton called Bridgeton Number Seven. It's the seventh store in the system. When we do that, everybody is a winner. It's a great, great product. The, the county gets approximately 75% more revenue per bottle, for that particular bottle, and that means that the city gets more money for the bottle. So everybody wins here, and the, and the customer gets a great, great tasting bourbon. We are known in the state of North Carolina as the premier system to deliver this. We, we put more, more barrels out there than even Wade County and Nash County. So, I mean, we're, you know, in Greensboro and the tri-community. So we're up in the front of all these things. And the other item that we're doing in our stores, every store has a cooler, so that if you want to take home that eggnog this year, it'll be nice and chill for you when you, when you go back home and try it out. So each store, to include the, the New Bern stores, has, has that. We continue to be very aggressive, as I said, and improve the, the policies that we had this year towards law enforcement, working with Chip Hughes. We've kind of rewrote the manual, if you will, on how we do business on that, so that you'll see some additional safety features coming on. Very proud of our intern program. Our intern program this past year, two individuals, two ladies. We're very diverse at the Craven County ABC Board, and we apply that. And matter of fact, one of our, one of our ladies who just went through the intern program is now a store manager, and so we're, we're very proud of that. Next, please. So where are we going to be going? We're expecting to have, you know, we listen to the federal government when they come here to New Bern, and they give their little spring view of how things are going to be going for the next year. Well, we listen to the tourist piece of that. That, that's, that's kind of our hint. This is a great tourist town. 22% of our sales come from our liquor-by-the-drink, and when you analyze where that, that comes from, about 40% are tourists. So that tells you some, that's just on, on the, the sales inside the liquor-by-the-drink establishment. So we looked at the zip codes on the credit cards, and most people do credit cards these, these days. We find that we're about 18% on that side, tourists. So, you know, we, we want to make sure that they have a great experience here in Craven County, and we look forward to helping them do that. And by doing that, we've gone, in the last 10 years, we've gone from $6.2 million, and now we're estimating we're going to do about $19 million. So that, that's how we, how, how that's going away. Okay, next, please. So one of the things we're very proud of is that besides the fact that we contribute cash to the great city of New Bern and Avlak and Vanceboro, where we have stores, and to the county, of course, is that we do other things that you don't quite see so much, and that is the social aspect of the ABC Board. We're required by law, and we actually achieved that, go a little bit over, of giving 7% of our total revenue to organizations that promote an anti-underage drinking program, such as Deere. Okay? So, now may I ask for, show hands of whom you've been in the Deere program, and all you kids, and probably the mayor, the mayor was one, yes. It's a great program, and we're proud to say that we sponsored the entirety here in Craven County to include, you know, that's, that's 22 schools, and, and also includes summer camp. And, and the message is consistent, you know, about bad decisions, bullying, drugs, alcohol, you know. So we're very proud of that. We also help out a couple of, two halfway houses. We're very proud of that program that we, we, we help with a significant amount of money. And we contribute to the, the rehab clinic down in Oslo, quite a bit of money, about $140,000. So we contribute mightily to that and to these other programs. So that's something you don't see us doing, but those checks go out of our office to them as well. So that's, that's our story there. Yes, ma'am? Next, please. If you're in the business world, this is the kind of slope you like to see. It's a steady slope going up. And I can here tell you that it's not a matter that Craven County sells a lot of alcohol. We tend to sell here in Craven County medium shelf and top shelf. Our friends over in Pitt, thanks to the university, do, do a lot of aristocrat and a lot of bottom-shelf stuff. They have to work a lot harder and sell a lot more bottles than we do here in Craven. We, our average sale is about $14 a bottle as compared to Pitt's $7, and Carteret's $11. So you can see we tend to sell a little bit high here in Craven County. I, I actually believe that with the new store in Bridgeton, we'll be somewhere around 20 to 21 million here after full year of operation. Yes, ma'am? So here's the story. This is how we spend all that money. We call it the tail of the bottle. So that's 16.7. And, and one of the counselors here noted, noted that, he says, you know, Chip, I, I noticed how much you, you have down for New Bern, but yet I kind of cheated, and I looked already how much you're going to give a check, and there's a difference there. Sharp, sharp board we have here to pick that up. And, and so, as I told the, the Alderman, we give you money every quarter based on, you know, the outline, so that at the end of the year, this is not something that we just, just give to you. We give you the max, and under the law, I can only give you 30%, and that's what we give you. We give you the max. A lot of boards don't do that. So you've already got $30,000 from, from the Craven County ABC Board. Thank you very much, Alderman Bob. Appreciate you helping me. So those are the other items that we do give to, you see on the, the tail of the bottle. Next, please. We're going to be here shortly, opening up the new store, and you are all invited, by the way, 18th December, 1:00. You're invited to go over to Bridgeton and see the new, the, the latest and what a store in North Carolina will be like and what we'll, we'll bring, I think, in a couple of years to West Craven. I think that we're looking already, it won't be Chip, I can tell you that, but I, I see that within three to five years, a need in West Craven for a store, and you want to make sure it's inside the city limits so that you get your proportion of that. So the, when we move out of our Martin Drive, the county's going to take that over. So here's the savings that's in our surplus. Had the county not wanted it, then the city of Bridgeton, I mean, the city of New Bern would have been asked if they needed it, but this is a, it's a great warehouse. We're going to be giving it over to the, to the county, and they're going to use it for their maintenance operation facility. It's valued at about $700,000, so then they're going to get that for the princely sum of $1. Okay? Next, please. Do you have any questions that I might be able to answer, Board?
Board have questions?
Next slide, ma'am? If not, I have a check here, sir. I'd be happy to give it to whoever you would like me to.
Give it, give it to that lady right there, because that's where it's going to end up anyway.
Got a check here for $53,048.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. And as always, it's always a pleasure coming, and as you can tell, I get my hat. I'm, I'm getting ready for your latest thing, the SantaCon. Chip, we'll be out there doing the pub crawl, and I'm helping the revenue of the city of New Bern. I'll be trying to help you out a few bucks there.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Everything that your staff does.
Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is a presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report and audit for FYI ending June 30, 2023. Ms. Odom?
The city completed its fiscal year '23 audit and hit, and submitted it to the local government commission. The Board was provided the annual comprehensive financial report and a copy of the presentation that is before you on December 5th. Today, we have Ellen Thompson with Thompson Price, Scott and Adams to discuss the findings of the effort and the audit.
Good evening to everyone. If you'd be kind enough in your presentation summary to flip over to page one, a couple of things I need to cover, and we'll go through some of the numbers as well. The main thing you do, you hire an outside independent auditor to do, is issue an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. We issued an unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote clean report. On page one, in those three paragraphs, it talks about appropriate accounting policies, accounting estimates, and financial statement disclosures. We were good with all the city's estimates and disclosures. On page two, there were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated November 21st, and we're unaware that management consulted the outside accountants, auditors, et cetera. One comment is, continue to work on some of the fund balances with negative fund balances, or funds with negative fund balances, some of the projects, et cetera. With that, if you'd be kind enough to flip over to page four. I don't say these are all the key numbers in the audit report, but these are some of the key numbers in the audit report. In this first column for June 30, 2023, what you have in the four previous columns is the four prior-year audit reports. The purpose for that is to give you some context for, like, fund balance, so that it's not just a number in space. You get a feel for trend information, et cetera. So you can see there were total fund balances, and your general fund was $35,621. If you were to go back to 2019, you can see that number is $22,829. Unavailable fund balance, $12,290. balance, twelve million, two ninety-four. Restricted and assigned at thirteen million, nine forty-seven. General fund expenditures at thirty-eight million, two thirty-one. And then fund balance available as a percentage is sixty-one point oh two percent. Unassigned fund balance at twenty-one point four two nine. And then unassigned fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures is fifty-six point oh five. And then unassigned fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures excluding FEMA was sixty point oh five. There's a note there about ARPA, as it, the impact it had on fund balance, et cetera. It'll be a whole lot clearer when we chart it out here in just a second, when you see it. I think it's maybe two more, two or three more pages in, when you should see it on the chart, with and without ARPA. And revenues over and under expenses before contributions and transfers, the general fund had a negative one million, three eighty-nine. Electric fund was two, negative two forty-three. Water fund was a positive million, five twenty. And the sewer fund was a negative three hundred and forty-two thousand, nine ninety-one. On those three proprietary funds, you can see the fixed assets, accumulated depreciation and cash. I won't read all those numbers. But you can see further down, your cash, you know, general fund was twenty-seven million, nine twenty-eight. If you go back to 2019, that number is six million, eight seventy-six. Electric fund is fifteen million, one ninety-two. Water fund is fourteen million, eight sixty-four. And the sewer fund is two million, seven ten. Some of those numbers might be impacted significantly after the reimbursement of some of the expenditures for the proprietary funds. The other governmental fund had a cash balance of two million, one sixty-five. And then the fund balances there, the general fund, thirty-five point six two one again. The electric fund at fifty-two million, eight thirty-three, the water at forty-eight, fourteen, and the sewer at sixty-six, eight seventy-five. FEMA still has a negative million, five twenty-eight, and other governmental's a million, nine thirty. Realize those enterprise funds, a lot of that net position, if you will, is fixed asset related, so it's not really spendable money. And then you see your property tax rates for the five years, along with collection percentages. Collection percentages over ninety-nine percent for all years presented. Then you see your total property valuation and total levy. And next, you see total debt there for both governmental activities and business-type activities. And then if you'd be kind enough to flip over to page five, you see a breakdown of your general fund revenue with thirty-seven million, and then a breakdown of your general fund expenditures at thirty-eight million, four hundred and two thousand dollars. And if you'd be kind enough to flip over to page six, you see total fund balance there in blue. You see restricted and assigned in red, and then committed ARPA funds there in green. On the bottom of that page, you see your analysis of fund balance available in blue, and the group weighted average there in the red. The reason the group weighted average didn't continue on is the state decided that they were going to change the way they calculate a group weighted average, and it really doesn't have as much meaning because it's everybody above a hundred million and everybody below a hundred million, rather than grouping it by population. And on page seven, what I was trying to say earlier, that you could see the variance that the ARPA funds had, or the impact it did, if you would continue on with the green dotted line, you can see where it would have been without the ARPA funds, and you see where it is with the ARPA funds. On the bottom, you see the analysis of revenues over and under expenses before transfers and contributions. And then if you'd be kind enough to flip over to page eight, you see your cash balances and fund balances by fund with the specific totals underneath that. And you can see cash balances at sixty million, six ninety-six, and fund balances at two hundred and three million, seven forty-one. Underneath that, you see property tax rates and compared to your group weighted average when applicable. And then on page nine, you see your collection percentages, the statewide average, group weighted average. And then on the bottom, you see a breakdown of your general fund revenue. Really nice when you've got a, have a loan taxes at less than fifty percent, and your sales tax, other governmental, related at forty-three point nine six. So you've got a good division of income coming into your general fund. And on page ten, you see where the largest expenditure is public safety, which speaks well for you as a board management. And then if you'd be kind enough, there's one financial item to consider. And I think your finance officer did a wonderful job. I saw the memo she sent out, email on dated December 5th. I don't consider this a concern. One of the issues I have necessarily with the, with the model they create is it's hard for them to take into consideration all the factors that are going on around a specific issue. So they're keying in certain numbers. If it pops out in their model, then we're supposed to present it. As a result, I'm presenting it. But if you consider all the bullet points that she emailed to you on that December 5th memo, I think you'll see that that's not really an issue or a performance indicator of concern. So that's my opinion, but I present it to you respectfully. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have of me. I'm happy to answer any questions anytime you have of me. You're always welcome to give me a call. If I happen not to be in the office, you're always welcome to ask for my cell number, and I'll get you an answer to your question.
Board have questions? Only question I have for you is on page eleven, what you just talked about, the cash flow indicator. That negative four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, which account is that representing? Is that general fund or is that a enterprise?
It's an enterprise fund.
Okay. So we've already addressed the rates with the last budget. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I don't believe we have to take any action on this to approve it or anything. So we appreciate your input.
Thank you. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you. Okay. Item number thirteen is a presentation on long-range plan funding strategy for metropolitan planning organization. How are you?
Hi, good evening.
Evening.
Sorry, looking for the clicker for the presentation.
Colleen? Here she comes.
I was on some other presentation.
Okay, we can talk to it. So again, good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about the New Bern area MPO's long-range plan, which is also known as a metropolitan transportation plan. Now, this plan identifies needed projects for all modes of transportation to support the growth and development of the region for the next twenty-five years. This plan is federally required to be updated every five years. So our current plan envisioned 2045 was adopted in March of 2021, which means that the new plan needs to be updated by March of 2026. And I will point out that because it's a federally required plan, if we do not have a plan in place, no available funding from NC DOT is allowed to come to us until that plan has been adopted. So a plan of this size is quite complex. Normally takes about a year and a half to complete, and it's averaged about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So a proposed funding strategy that I'm presenting on behalf of the MPO is for us to utilize unspent funds from FY23 in the amount of seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars. So of that, eighty percent of it is federal money, which is about fifty-eight thousand, and that does require a local match of twenty percent of fourteen thousand, five hundred. So with that amount, each of our member agencies, by their pro-rata share of population, has a small share of that local amount. And for New Bern, that amount is eight thousand, forty-four dollars and sixty cents. So utilizing FY23 funds, some funds from FY24, and a little bit of funds from FY25, we can fund this hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar plan. Alternatively, if we would like to just start, look forward, we can use some funds from 24 and funding for the next three fiscal years combined to allow us to get to that one twenty-five number. However, if we end up doing that, there will be no additional funding for any other studies for three fiscal years. And that, I'd also mention that the funding, we got, we received word from FY25 funding that it'll be reduced by twenty-eight thousand dollars, which will, again, limit our ability to do some other plans. So tonight, staff's recommendation is to support appropriating New Bern's local share matching amount of eight thousand, forty-four dollars and sixty cents towards the MPO's long-range plan update with a budget amendment to be presented at a future meeting. And that concludes my presentation and would be happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions? Only question I have for the other member agencies, are we confident that they are going to support the required amounts from them?
Great question, Mayor. I have met with the town of Trent Woods, and I have a presentation scheduled with the county in January, and I've reached out to Bridgeton and Riverbend as well. So the consensus during the TAC meeting was yes, they're in support.
Okay. I assume so. I just wanted to ask.
Mr. Hughes, are we going to have something on a future agenda to approve the request that's being made?
In the form of a budget amendment, yes, sir.
Okay.
You're just looking for direction, or do you want a motion?
That'll be fine. Direction will be fine.
So you don't have a problem with this coming back to the budget amendment for eight thousand dollars?
No.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is item number fourteen, conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to annex a portion of tax parcel ID eight two zero nine one three zero zero one. Mr. Hughes?
Mayor, where the house or six annex portion of that property, so three point two three acres in the western area, portions of this parcel have previously been annexed. After conducting a public hearing, the board has asked to consider adopting an ordinance to annex this property.
Board have questions for staff before we open a public hearing? Okay. At this time, I will open a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance to annex tax parcel eight two zero nine one three zero zero one. If anyone has any comments, please come forward.
Mayor, seeing nobody coming forward, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
May I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to annex a portion of tax parcel ID eight two oh nine one three zero zero one, warehouser in our company?
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Freel?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number fifteen is appointment of Mayor Protem and administration of oath for the board's recollection once a year at our first meeting in December. It's part of our procedure, is to appoint a Mayor Protem should the mayor not be able to serve for whatever reason.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that I'd like to appoint Alderman Hazel Royal as Mayor Protem.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is, is that amenable to you, Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to appoint Alderman Royal as Mayor Protem for the upcoming year. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Alderman Royal. If you want to go down to the podium, the clerk will administer your oath. And while you're doing that, I'll just take a moment to thank Mayor Protem Brinson for serving this past year, and a few times that you've been able to step in, and I appreciate that.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God? Do you solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Mayor Protem, so help you God? Do you solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the Constitution, powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God? Congratulations.
on to the next item, Mr. Hughes, I believe there may be a sound issue online that we're having some reports about. Colleen, do you, you know what could be causing that?
On the web or Facebook, I have audio on both.
Do you know, Barbara?
They didn't say that. He said he can't hear the meaning. There's no sound.
Well, if you're showing it on our end, then it could possibly be on their end. Okay, thank you. And if you recall, we tabled item number sixteen. So we will move on to item number seventeen, consider adopting a resolution approving a sewer use agreement for six eight four West Thurman Road. Mr. Jordan Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. What you have before you, this agenda item is a standard city sewer use agreement. The owners of six eighty-four West Thurman Road approached the city requesting connection to the city's sewer system in the area. We've reviewed the request, have ample capacity to hook them up to the existing infrastructure we have in place. And I think what the proposed development there is, is a small veterinary office on West Thurman. So staff has reviewed the request and are recommending approval of the sewer use agreement.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a sewer use agreement for six eight four West Thurman Road.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Freel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Jordan?
No order, Jordan?
No, sir, Alderman Astor. There's a real small section of Thurman Road that has got a, has an established water system from Craven County. We've only got a few customers in there, and we've allowed those to connect to Craven County. That was the most advantageous way to get those customers hooked up.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number eighteen is consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager and mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement with the NC Department of Public Safety, emergency management to accept grant funds for the purchase of an underwater remote-operated vehicle. Chief Gallagher.
Good evening to Mayor Alderman, city manager. First, I'd like to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy Hanukkah. Before you is a agreement for a grant. There is no matching funds for the purchase of a seventy-two thousand dollar underwater remote-controlled vehicle. We believe that this will assist us in filling a service gap in terms of trying to recover evidence for search and rescue purposes in the city of New Bern. As we all know, there are many waterways in our city, and this obviously will be As we all know, there are many waterways in our city and this obviously will be an asset to us and the region. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
Chief, what training needs to be secured by the officer that would be the operator?
Part of our deployment strategies will include training and we'll work with the vendor to ensure that our staff is well qualified in utilizing the equipment purchased.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager and mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement with NC Department of Public Safety Emergency Management to accept grant funds for the purchase of an underwater remote operated vehicle.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number nineteen, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Sound Thinking, Inc. for Spot Shoner. Chief Gallagher again.
Mayor, thank you again. This is the second, if not the third, time I've been before this body to request this particular product, Shot Spotter. I provided the statistical stats with respect to gunfire in our community, specifically in the area of Duffy Field, in response to the needs to be transparent within our community. We held a information session at the Omega Center and we had subject matter experts with the vendor Shot Spotter to come and answer questions. It was overwhelmingly supported by members of the community at that event, also received personal contact from several other members of the community that are in support of this project. We do ask that the contract be signed. We are very grateful to Alderman Astor for his kind gift of his APR funds and we will work towards finding funding moving forwards. This will be a three-year contract.
Board have questions?
Couple of questions, Chief. According to the write-up and Lisa, I was looking at the sixteen thousand eight hundred startup costs, those are no longer included or?
We will no longer need those. Those monies were earmarked towards bridging our RMS system, our CAD system. We no longer believe that that's going to be necessary.
Okay, so you don't need the API either? There was an add-on for ninety-five hundred a year?
All we are now required, or we're requesting, is the amount here.
Okay, just making sure.
Yes, sir. So to get the system and to pay for it for the first year is forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars? That's correct. And then it'll be forty-nine thousand five hundred annually? That's correct.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a contract for Sound Thinking Shot Spotter.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? I just have one, is this initial year one coming out of Alderman Astor's ARP funding? Is that what the decision was?
Yes, sir. Well, I was going to ask for a new business.
Okay.
I'll do it now if you want.
Well, let's just approve it and then we can clean that up on a new business, it'll be fine. So, any other questions?
Chief, is there a plan in place to reach out to the community to see if there's a willingness on the part of businesses and/or individuals to contribute towards future year costs for this program?
Yes, there is a plan for that. And identifiable stakeholders have already been identified and I will reach out to them pending the outcome of this vote.
Just, I'll make the same comment I did last time when you presented this, we need to understand that if Alderman Astor's putting forth around fifty thousand dollars for year one, this is a three-year commitment. So the chief is going to try to go out and recover funds to help pay for it in year two and year three, but there's no guarantee. So essentially tonight, this decision is obligating the city for around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you just need to keep that in mind.
Do you know, Chief, if there is any grants available? Has any information came forth about for this program for the city?
I have not seen any grants that we could apply for specific to this, however, I do know there's some federal dollars out there based on HUD because part of this will be covered under, the coverage of Shot Spotter will include Trent Court, so there's opportunities for federal monies there.
Chief, I'm hoping that after we've had this in place for a few months, you're going to be able to come back and present to us the findings and what this tool has been doing and it would convince us, even if we had to pay for it, that it would be a good investment. So I'm hopeful and optimistic that'll be the case. Any further questions? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Board, the next two items, we can consider these together if you would like. Item number twenty is to consider adopting a resolution amending the FY twenty twenty Annual Action Plan for CDVG Program. And item number twenty-one is to do the same for the FY twenty twenty-one Annual Action Plan. So, at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Deasia Fullmore to talk about these updates.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Alderman. The original presentation showed that we will be donating the home the redevelopment commission has at nine eleven U-Bank Street to Habitat for Humanity to sell to a low-income family. That is an amendment to the previous plan, which was to bring it on the market as rental property.
That is for item number twenty or item twenty and twenty-one?
Twenty and twenty-one.
Okay.
It does not change the line budget item, we're just simply changing the language in our integrated dispersment information system, which is where we submit all of our plans to HUD for review.
Okay, very good. Board have questions? I have one. Sure.
So we did it this way, so there was a thirty-day public comment period, did you get any public comments?
No comments were received, yes, it's been on display for thirty days.
There's no more questions? I make a motion to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty twenty and fiscal year twenty twenty-one Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Pril.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Item number twenty-two is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of an updated memorandum of understanding with RHA Health Services for the Co-Responder Program. Chief Gallagher is back.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is an updated MOU based on additional grant monies that the city of New Bern was granted for our co-responder program. There's substantially nothing majorly different other than describing the financial responsibilities of RHA regarding the expenditure of that grant funds.
Does the board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of an updated memorandum of understanding with RHA Health Services for a co-responder program. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Item number twenty-three is to consider adopting a resolution approving the Amendment Three of the Pamlico Sound Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Alderman. What's before you tonight, as you recall, on the fourteenth meeting of this board, November fourteenth, we did review an application for a BRIC. And part of that has to match the regional hazard mitigation plan that we have, we operate under. We felt that it was generic enough that it fell under, but we had been suggested by the North Carolina Department of Public Safety staff to be very specific. So what is before you is specific language to be added into the Pamlico Sound Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And it just basically lays out the rail corridor planning study in its entirety. It just takes a vote of this board and if it is successful on the approved amendment, it'll be submitted to the group to include it in the plan. I am open for any questions, if there are any.
Does the board have questions on item number twenty-three?
I had a question on the hazardous mitigation plan. The way the language, to me, reads is, ends up if we don't get the BRIC grant, then we're on the hook to fund this study, is that correct? It's not the way?
That is not the case, no, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
There's no questions, I'll make a motion, Mayor. I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of an updated memorandum of understanding with RHA Health Services for the co-responder, no, wait a minute.
We're on item twenty-three.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving Amendment Three of the Pamlico Sound Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number twenty-four is to consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for FY twenty-three twenty-four. Ms. Ostrom.
The budget amendment will appropriate eight thousand two hundred ninety dollars and ninety-one cents for the fire grant to secure additional radios as discussed earlier, no, as discussed in the November fourteenth meeting. And it also acknowledges grant funds in the amount of seventy-two thousand seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents for the police department's purchase of underwater remote operated vehicle as discussed earlier.
Board have questions on item number twenty-four?
Have they authorized that seventy-two thousand for the police department? Has that been approved? You received that grant? Are you just applying for it?
There ain't never been a recidivism.
It has been, okay.
It's the pleasure of the board on item number twenty-four.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Okay, item number twenty-five, Alderman Kinsey still has his PMZ board appointment, obviously he's not here tonight. The only other appointments that I show would be for the initial installation of participants for the MSD. Everyone received a package, I believe, at our last board meeting with the resumes and the sheet that showed the categories with those folks that had been vetted to make sure that they were qualified by the city clerk. And so tonight, everyone should have in front of you a ballot. It lists the various categories. As a reminder, there's one appointment for each one of the categories listed, with the exception of residential. There are four seats for the residential seat. So if the board would take a couple minutes to fill that out and then someone will pick these up and they will tally these and give us the results in a few moments. Any questions regarding that? Chief Shorty's will pick them up tonight for us. Senator City Manager report.
Mayor, why there's some tabulation?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to hit my report? Because all I need is some direction regarding the rickshaw.
Sure.
Once it's up to you.
Does the board have questions or comments regarding the request we heard under petition of citizens for basically allowing a bicycle taxi service? Is that what, good description?
Yes, so this is probably the third or fourth request in the last decade or so. Previously, by the time we started thinking about it, the applicant had moved on to other This request seems quite serious. To accommodate the request, we would need to create an ordinance that would authorize the city to issue a little franchise for penny cabs, things like that. You would, I would expect that you would think about restricting it into a certain downtown commercial area and not have bikes all over, all over the city. Can't imagine there being a need for that, but just to be clear. So my thought would be, if you wanted to give that direction in January, I would just simply have something for you to reflect on, not to adopt or do anything, but at least to get smart on what it looks like and what's involved. And that would be, it would be an ordinance that would allow effectively anyone that wanted to get into that business to apply for and get the permit, once they meet the criteria, insurance, et cetera.
So I have a question while the board's thinking about that. So, there was a new business that launched, I think, last year or so, where they have bicycles that are rented. Those bicycles are stored on private property.
Yeah.
But they're actually driven downtown, is there any?
Yeah, well, because they're located on private property and there's people on bicycles without the escort and the cab driver, et cetera. We've not gotten into.
All right, so the reason I was asking is if this rickshaw set up on private property somewhere and they were selling those, but the fact that they're escorting people and it's a driver, it falls in like a taxi.
Yeah, the nature of that business, it has to be, it has to be conducted in the right way. You've got to pick up folks on the sidewalk. I don't know it's going to be successful if you have pickup areas and drop-off areas on private property.
Does the board have thoughts, Alderman Pril's primarily for downtown, you have any thoughts here?
Scott, with any previous requests or the current requests, with any research that you may have done with those requests in the past, were there any specific issues that kind of came up that might be of concern to the city?
Nothing, nothing comes to mind. We had one that was somewhat of a non-starter, it was one of those pedal pubs where you pedal and have beer, you know, while someone else drives the carts. But generally, no, we're going to follow, other cities have these little franchises and we would do largely mirror. The question would be really the geography, the guts of the ordinance are quite straightforward. Turn, all the safety features are dealt with, screening your penny cab operators, and then what area they're going to operate in. And off the top of my head, I might think that it would be Broad Street to the Two Rivers to Hancock, something along those lines.
Do you think it'd be wise as part of our consideration, or could we place a requirement upon the operators to pull off of the roadway to discharge or pick up, you know, so that they're not blocking traffic, the flow of traffic?
Yeah, I can certainly look at those options. Yeah, can certainly look at those options. There is the practical consequence of that. We can look at, we can look at the down layout of pedestrian crossings and loading zones to see how far they are. Most folks are accustomed to, take me to that store, take me to that restaurant, and they don't want to be left a block away because there's cars on both sides of the road. But certainly an issue that I can look into. And we can certainly draft whatever the board likes. If that's the board's pleasure, then certainly we can draft it to accommodate that.
Another question is, again, you said that these vehicles would be garaged at the owner's place, not left downtown?
Yes, ma'am. They could not, they would have to be on private property, wherever that might be. They could not be left on public property.
Would you require the operators to have at least a driver's license? Or, I just don't want twelve-year-olds out doing this.
That's exactly right, yes. There would have to be a screening and a vetting with, with criteria so that we knew who the operators were and that they had a driver's license, et cetera.
I'm all in favor for that. I like the idea.
I guess I'm kind of asking how that would work, because, I mean, this company is asking for a permit for possibly four. And so would the permit be for the company or the individual operators? I guess it gets to kind of Alderman Astor's question.
Yeah, it would operate a lot like the old-fashioned taxicab ordinances, where the taxicab company gets its permit, and then, and then its application has all of its drivers, all the license, all the information is in that application. So your permit would be for X pedicabs for this calendar year. And there would be some kind of administrative fee, I would imagine. But all that would be kept at city staff, and we could figure out who might have to organize that administrative. And again, we're just talking conceptual. But my question is, do I go draft something to start thinking about and asking these tough questions, or is this a pass?
Aye, Cory.
Got to the board moving forward.
Yeah, I can even move forward quickly.
I'll take the next step. Thank you.
That all you have?
Yeah.
Okay, City Manager's report.
Yes, just a few things. I want to remind everyone that City Office will be closed on December twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh for Christmas holiday. And the New Year's Eve block party will be held on December thirty-first. The event will start at five-thirty p.m. So we certainly invite all of our citizens and visitors, if they're in town at that time, to come down and enjoy a fun evening of events and activities. And of course, we'd love to ask Alderman to come down as well, and bring in the New Year.
Okay, new business, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Talking about wreaths across America, that will be on both Thursday and Saturday of this week. Happy to report that our local contingent has been able to sponsor six thousand and sixty wreaths. So it has been an incredibly, incredibly successful year. Those that are interested, Thursday, December fourteenth, at the Clark's exit, at zero eight-thirty, the truck is supposed to arrive for a motorcycle escort for those that are interested in participating in that. There'll be a safety brief at eight-thirty before they take off. And then those of you that want to see them drive by, they will take Highway seventy to MLK, to Broad Street, and then to George Street, and then to the cemetery. And then at nine-thirty, they are set to arrive to unbox the, or to unload the truck there at the cemetery. Then on Saturday, the sixteenth, for those that are interested, volunteers can arrive at zero nine-hundred to unbox the wreaths and start the setup at that time. And then thanks to the city of New Bern, we'll be running buses from eleven-hundred to two p.m. from the old Roos Chapel area, parking there, and driving to and from the cemetery. And then the actual wreaths across America ceremony will be at twelve o'clock on Saturday, the sixteenth. And then please put on your calendars, January thirteenth at zero, at, I started to say zero nine-hundred, but nine a.m. for everyone. Is there wreath retirement? So they need many hands, make a burden light out there to retire the wreaths. And again, thanks to the city for providing dumpsters and things like that for that retirement. For those that are going out to, or have not been out to New Bern Cemetery recently, if you probably remember that the wall was damaged out there, had a, had a car run into it. And it's still, it's been a number of months ago, still has not been repaired yet. We had a group meet with the Veterans Administration. It's the VA that actually takes care of our national cemeteries. And what we discovered was there are only four companies in all of the United States that can repair Civil War brick and mortar. They actually develop the bricks the old-fashioned way to put them together, and the mortar. And so they are actually, they wanted to make the timeline to get it fixed before the December ceremony, but that's not going to happen. So they are promising now to have it fixed by February of 2024. So those of you that are going out to the cemetery, you'll still see a hole in the wall there, but there is a plan to fix it. And again, it's because it takes a while to make those bricks and that mortar and get that company energized to come out of here. And that's all that happens.
All right, Alderman Best.
She's doing the tally. I'll ask you, Foster, you may know Mayor. I was going to ask Brenda, but she's busy. If a citizen comes forth and wants to purchase a city property through the upset bid process, they have to submit their application in to CECOR. Okay. Is there any rules or regulations or in place for what that individual can put on their property in zone regulations, whatever? Is there anything in place? Is it on the website? Is it so that that person will know before they purchase that property, okay, well, I can do this and this and this with my property?
Unless it's a female law, where there are certain restrictions from the federal government, and they're making the zoning, there shouldn't be.
That's the question, is they don't know the zone?
Yeah.
Okay.
But they're referred to the zoning administrator before we'll even take a bid, so that they know what can go on that property.
Okay, great, okay. The reason why I ask is because I had a young man that purchased a city lot, and now he's not being able to put a home plus business on his, on that lot. Okay, well, as long as the information is there available to the, to the citizens, then I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I've actually, I've been in the office before with the clerk, and someone's come in, and I specifically remember her saying, hey, the first thing we recommend for you to do is go talk to Development Services, find out what restrictions are there.
Great. I think I had one other thing. Oh, I know the mayor had mentioned about access to City Hall, because we got the new elevator now where citizens can, anybody can just come on up on the elevator. At what point are we with that now? I mean?
So just to let you know, we did have PV, after we discussed this a few meetings ago, we had PV come in and do an assessment of City Hall. They had given some recommendations. We were getting some pricing based on those recommendations, and we plan coming back to the board most likely at the January meeting with a proposed budget amendment to address those issues.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. And another, I had another question that was asked, and I didn't even look myself. The, I guess you would call plaque that's put down in the entranceway there by the elevator, is that in place now, or is it still?
It is done in place. We're waiting for the contractor to come, come back and install that for us.
All right.
Foster, I believe it indicated that's probably going to happen this week, by Friday.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And that's it, sir.
Okay, Alderman Astor.
Yes. First thing I'd like to do is start out with make, or asking to be able to use forty-nine thousand, I wrote it down somewhere, forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to purchase the Shot Spotter for the first year, using ARP money.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries?
Thank you. Also, sorry, excuse me.
You sure you don't need a roll call for that? You're good with a, you're good with a voice vote?
Yes, because there'll be a budget amendment that comes back. You'll have to do a roll call on that.
All right. Alderman Astor.
Okay. Again, I'm just going to ask, where are we at with the Days Inn property? I would, I mean, I'd love to see something happen with that property. We need to get it up, get it for sale, something.
So one thing I can tell you is the Carolina Council of Governments has recently received a grant to work with the International Economic Development Council. We have spoken with them to ask them to give us some recommendations on that property, and also to Hancock, Hancock and South Front Creek property, to give us recommendations on highest and best use. So we wanted to do that. It's going to be a free, free thing that they're going to provide for us. We're going to bring some of those recommendations back to the board and go to the mayor.
Okay. And do we have an update? I know we talked about this a long time ago, but do we have an update on that store in the Five Points area of Broad Street that was, we had so much problems with, that Scott was working on?
Convenience store?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you familiar?
Last time I asked, they complied with all the requirements that we put forth in front of them.
Scott could provide a lot more detail, but we presented Scott with our recommendations in terms of some SEPTED recommendations. The owner of the Five Points has complied with some. In fact, we had a conversation with Scott just two weeks ago in terms of where that status is. I'm not exactly sure. Scott just walked out the door. But, but we are monitoring compliance with the embedded recommendations that we had with the new ownership.
Okay. All right. And Foster, I just want to let you know that downtown is beautiful. You know, Parks and Rec and Public Works has done a wonderful job, you know, with the downtown area. And I especially like the wreaths where we've changed some of the light bulbs and put red, white, and green bulbs in there. That really makes them stand out. And all those white ones just kind of was kind of blah looking. But I love the ones with the colored lights in it. So thank you, or whoever, you know, if you would pass that on, I appreciate it.
We certainly will, and thank you for noticing the color change. We're trying to turn that over to give us a more festive look, opposed to that cool white look on all those.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is that poor Colleen is sitting out here, and I had suggested to Public Works years ago than that we get her some type of a camera or something, you know, where she can view what's going on outside the doors of these meetings, you know, at all times, or even a peephole. So if somebody knocks on the door.
She got a peephole.
She did get a peephole?
Yeah, she got a peephole. Might be a little bit too tall for her, but she got a peephole.
We can get her a chair.
Yeah, she has to wear high heels when she has meetings.
So I reckon that will resolve that problem. Thank you for letting me know. And then I just, I just like to wish everybody a Merry Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and please stay safe. Thank you.
Alderman Royal.
In the words of Alderman Astor, I'd like to wish all of our citizens a very, very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and to my colleagues here, the Board of Alderman, to the city staff, to all, very Merry Merry Christmas. Thank you. That will be all.
All right, Alderman Priel.
Nothing this evening.
Okay, just one thing I was going to say, sort of in line with what Alderman Astor kicked us off with. We had our tree lighting, we had the airshow, and then this past weekend, we had the live Windows display. Not sure how many people were here. Do you have the number?
We had the parade as well, so.
Yeah, we had, we had the parade too. So we had a hundred and thirty entrants in the parade.
A hundred and thirty entrants. I will tell you that we did look at PlayStation AI for that, and there were ten thousand that were downtown during the parade. Don't have numbers for this past weekend yet.
Okay, so everything has been, been working wonderfully. And I just heard during the, I was a judge for the window display, and there were so many people downtown, and I just heard comments from so many people about how great and wonderful it was. There was, there was food trucks, the restaurants were open, the businesses were open. Everybody was in a festive and a joyous mood. And I almost asked if we have our election then, because I felt pretty good at that point in time. But I do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. New Bern is a special place. We all know that, but it's extra special this time of the year, and we're, it's a pleasure for us to live here. And so, yes, ma'am?
I just want to also say to our city clerk, thank you for planning and getting our dinner tonight. You always take such great care of us. And happy, wish everyone, employees, Merry Christmas, and to all of you Merry Christmas, and hope you have a happy, healthy, prosperous new year.
Thank you. Do we have the tally for the MSD Committee?
We have the tally.
Before we go to that, can we hear from Attorney Davis regarding the Broad Street?
Yeah, Mr. Davis, the question was about Broad Street Convenience Store.
Yes, sir. Funny you ask. I just spoke with Captain Daniels last week about this. Usually when things are quiet on my front, it's a good sign, and things have been very quiet. So I asked Captain Daniels to look into it, to see if there were any, any problems with cooperation or otherwise. And he just, we just had that conversation in the last few days. So if anything's up, I'll let you know. The only other milestone, when we entered into our final agreement with the owner, the owner agreed to improve the facade of that store to coincide with the opening of the Stanley White Rec Center. So he's still got plenty of time for those deadlines. But, but I reminded Captain Daniel to remind the owner to just not lose track of that construction schedule.
Thank you.
Ms. Clerk.
Okay. I'll read the number of votes and who got the most, and then if you want me to go back and tell who cast each vote, which that'll be in the minutes, I can do that to you. So for Lawrence Commercial, Sabrina Bingle had five votes. So it goes to her. Jeff Medlin having one. Hospitality, six votes for John Haroldson. Restaurant, five votes for Chris Hudlin, if I'm saying that correctly, and one vote for Carol Stubbs. Retail, three votes for Johnny Robinson, two votes for Michael Rose Watson, and one vote for Heather Sinclair. Entertainment, I think you predicted, six votes for Von Lewis. Professional services, four votes for Michael Rains, one vote for Alice Chestnut, and one vote for George Oliver. Residential, with five votes, Mickey Miller. Four votes, David Barthol. Four votes, Michael Rose Watson. Tied at three, Jim Polo. And let me get the first name of this person. It wasn't on the ballot. Gretchen Dupeza. And then John Cho had one vote, Jim Conalton had one vote, Richard Parsons had one vote, and Maria Cho had two.
Okay, so.
Jim Polo and Gretchen Dupeza were tied with three.
Mr. Attorney, looking for direction. We have four seats. We have three that were filled. We have, one had five votes and two had four. So the last seat, how do you recommend we do this?
This is a residential seat?
Yes.
Where there are four seats.
Revote on.
Well, let me ask you, yeah, I would, absolutely. Revote on that last seat, taking into consideration, I guess.
That three people have already been removed.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to ballot, or?
Can we recirculate the ballots, and then we just add on to that same ballot?
You could do that. Just do, just be clear in your writing what you're doing, yes.
Okay.
Can you call that out again, the residential?
All of the votes that were cast?
Not the ones, not just one, not the ones with just one vote.
Who's taken?
Not the ones, not just one, not the ones with just one vote or two.
Who's taken?
Okay.
Who's already seated?
Mickey Miller.
Okay.
David Barthol, Michael Rose Watson, and then there's a tie between Jim Polo and Gretchen Dupeza.
Okay.
How you spell that last name?
D U P E Z A.
Gotcha. So one thing we're voting is for Polo and?
No, I think you can open it up to.
Yeah, I, I think you can open that up. It's, it's whatever the board would like to do, because now you've got the benefit of knowing who was placed.
Gotcha.
So if we look at all the applicants for residential and remove the ones that have already been?
It might help if the clerk would take those blank applications and strike through who's already seated, so that the board can see the candidates remaining.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
You follow it, Brenda?
I do follow, but.
We just strike through who's already got?
We don't have all the names listed. I can, if you want to spend a few minutes doing something else, I can write them down.
Oh, I see. There's no names. I got you.
So, um, are, are they going to meet before, would they have a meeting before our next board meeting? Because we could always just postpone that one last seat and then vote on it at the next meeting.
How many applicants are, how, how many folks for those, for that last seat are available? Brenda?
Well, I actually have the spreadsheet, so I can highlight the ones that are already seated and print. We've got a printer right in there and give you that list, and then you can choose someone from that list, if you want to do that.
Sure.
That'll just take a couple of seconds.
Sure.
Maybe I should have done that before we did new business, but that's all right. Somebody want to sing Christmas carols?
I nominate you.
I got one more question.
Sure.
Got a question from a constituent asking for an update on the baseball negotiations.
We plan to bring that back to the board in January. So we're finishing up contract negotiations with, with them, and we decided to be working on that.
Okay. Well, while we're just chatting, Mr. Hughes, we, we mentioned the parade earlier. How did that work with staff? Any issues, concerns, any thoughts or recommendations for next year?
Uh, I thought the parade turnout was excellent. I thought the coordination of it with the staff went very well. The way staff loaded everyone into the staging area pretty much went flawless. We were more concerned about backing traffic up onto the roads coming in there. It worked out very well, especially how they fed folks out. The biggest issue that we've heard was that once it was turned on Broad Street, and I think it was with folks doing some performances, that kind of created some gaps. And so we've had conversations with staff about that, and we have a plan to address that moving forward. And, you know, best time as any. In my conversations with Parks and Recreation staff, they'd love to do it again next year, but, you know, I'd love to hear what the board has to say. It's something I think the city can accommodate, based on what we did this year. So I'm happy to hear, hear what you all have to say.
I would just, I would pose the question that obviously we had a lot more turnout this year than was last year. Last year, they charged for entries, we did not charge. Do you think that that had any bearing on why we had more?
I think so. And, and the biggest, the biggest comment staff received was how it was organized, how well it was organized, and rules and regulations in place, and the feedback from staff to the applicants was pretty much within the moment parallel. So they, they like the constant communication and the direction they received onsite. And if we were doing, yeah, I honestly, I can't anticipate charging for that. And I think that was one of the things that made that such a good parade. If we do it, I think what we would do is look at bringing some professional folks in, in the future, to, and, and work with the nonprofit sponsorship for that.
Okay.
On your ballot, I'll just note, I've removed the three who are already part of the residential group. But I've also, you'll see, I've removed a fourth person. That's Sabrina Bingle, since she has the large commercial seat.
Okay.
We just vote for one, right?
Correct, just vote for one.
One person.
Hey, Foster, while we're waiting still, um, maybe, are we, we're still planning on putting that traffic signal up at middle and Broad, right?
We are. The building was held on, right at the end of November, and so we're waiting for companies to give us the timeline of when they're going to be able to start. I'm trying to source out the, all the materials right now for, for the install. So yes, that is going to have to occur hopefully by this spring, or that will be done around.
Good.
And Mayor, we're looking for four votes. That, that's, the plan is to get to four?
Yeah, we already have three.
I, but I mean, a nominee who gets a majority of the votes.
Correct.
So we have to keep hitting the herd if we don't get four.
Right, right, okay. While they're, while they're tallying that up, Ms. Ostrom, your, your staff, I'm sure did a lot of work with the audit. You want to, we didn't really talk a lot about it, because the audit's not that much fun to talk about, but do you want to recognize some staff members and maybe work on that?
I do. Tonight, we have Ellen Stevens, who is our accounting manager. Kim Rose, she handles the grants and FEMA. And then Tanya Harms does the budget and revenues. They're here tonight. They were here with the, for the audit presentation, and also to support their fellow coworker who received the Employee of the Year award. But their hard work and dedication to the success of the city in, in this audit was, is incredible. So I'm just glad they're here. They're a great member of the team, and I'm honored to be working with them.
Very good. Thank you for all your hard work. I'm hoping I won't take that long to count, six.
Oh, no, I'm ready when you are.
Okay.
Okay, with one vote, Jim Polo, Maria Cho, two votes, three votes for Gretchen Dupeza.
Okay, so is that?
Let's just go, let's, let's, let's limit the population to, to three and see if we can't get to four. I feel like we need, we need a, do you want, do you want to just, do you want a winner of the six, or do you want to get to four?
If we did what we did with the rest of them, it's just whoever was the top vote getter, right? I mean.
Yeah.
Unless the board wants to do something different with this one seat, we didn't really do that different with the other ones.
Top go getter. I'm okay with that. I was going to move on to the next question, which was the length of term.
So would you read then the four?
Yes, for residential, it is Mickey Miller, David Barthol, Michael Rose Watson, and Gretchen Dupeza.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I would just point out that, um, Ms. Watson is Michaela Rose Watson.
Okay, I was going about what's written on the.
Michaela, Michaela.
Okay, so I think Alderman Britson, you had something to say?
Well, if, if you recall, the, we've already set the terms for the six professional commercial owners. The, there are various terms for each of the residential, if I recall correctly. There's a couple of threes, maybe one, two, maybe one, one.
Ms. Clerk, do you have that information?
I do, and let me follow the resolution.
And so I was just going to make the recommendation, like we did last time, whoever had the most votes would have the longest terms. Actually, I think I have. I, I wrote it online. So there are two residential's.
Mickey Miller would have the longest term. Mr. Barthol would be the next longest.
Right. There are two three-year terms, one two-year term, and one one-year term. So we would have to decide between Mr. Barthol and Ms. Watson, who would get the three-year and who would get the two-years, if we did it the way I suggested.
So are we all in agreement that since Ms. Miller got the most votes, we would give her the longest term? Everyone good with that?
Yes.
Okay, and then since Ms. Dupeza got the least amount of votes, she would have the shortest term? Everyone good with that?
Yes.
And then, Mr. Attorney, can we flip a coin for the other two to see who gets the longest term? Does the board have any other suggestions on?
Flip coin, or draw the name out of the hat, whichever you want to do.
No, there's not, I mean, yeah, I guess probably easier to draw it out of the hat.
Any other suggestions or ideas?
Unless we do an all in favor and call the two members.
I mean, if, if someone wants to make a motion that one of those two individuals gets the longest term, and we can just vote on it, I'm fine with that, just so we can get it done. So it's, uh, Mr. Barthol and Ms. Watson are the two that we're trying to determine who gets the longest term.
Barthol and Watson. Will I make a motion? Is it Mr. Barthol?
Uh, yes, it's David.
David Barthol gets the longest term of the two.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Feel like we better do a roll call on this one, so let's do a roll call, starting with Alderman Royton.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Britson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
No.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries five, one. So the M S D. Board has been appointed. I guess at this point, the city clerk will do what she normally does, to contact all of these members and let them know where they sit. And then they will have to establish their first meeting, and then they'll have organizational things to do as far as electing chairs and folks of that nature. So. I believe we do need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We need a closed session to discuss the potential acquisition of real property, until one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eighty-five.
Have a motion by Alderman Astor. Do we have a second by Alderman Britson? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're in closed session. We are now back in open session.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn in a second. Any further discussion?
Merry Christmas out.
Merry Christmas. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed?